We're doing this new software and that's the guidelines for how we classify jobs when we're doing that. So we can start a dialogue with that, so that's.
It's, that's the way they're, should be classified and stuff. I, I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Okay, alright, well then we'll, I'll put it on for a department head meeting.
Just make sure you remember, just one supervisor, he gets classified.
Well, yeah, Bill's always been up there.
Quit, Michelle.
Especially for Monday, I.
Senority.
Okay, I just, we just wanted to make sure you were okay with it before we brought it up harder, if you had some objections to it.
Yeah, and then we go through pamming with it, she'll know whether we actually can do it and stuff.
Then we can present it to the department heads and they can start thinking about it, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there anything else you need to add?
I think that was.
Other than that, I think it's going pretty good. It's a lot of work, but once it's set up, it'll be nice.
Good.
To get all these jobs classified and.
One button eat?
Would it be that easy?
For, for majority of the employees, yeah.
Yeah.
One button clocked in, one button clocked out.
There you go, about lunch breaks.
Yeah, we do need to discuss that too. Part of the, part of the system is to either automatically deduct people's lunch breaks, so like, we would just clock in in the mornings, clock out at night, and it would automatically take out the lunchtime, or we have people clock out at lunch and clock back in at lunch. I feel like we need to make that consistent, however we choose to do it.
Yeah.
My, my personal is, I think they should clock out and back in for lunch. I mean, that's kind of the whole point is to keep track of when, when people are actually on the clock and not on the clock.
That's really kind of hard for the roadie park.
Yeah.
It's all on their phones.
It was on your phone, okay.
Well, don't they have to be within a certain distance of the?
They do to clock in and to clock out for the day. But midday, they, because they're also gonna be able to, our hope is, we're gonna work on this Thursday, they'll also be able to switch jobs, like you know how you break down what job you're doing if it was something different? They'll actually be able to go in and switch that, so that it'll actually give accurate how much time they were doing that job, which will be much better for the reporting bed needs to do to get like grants and such, and the DOT requirements of how much time's being spent on different jobs. This will actually give it accurate of how much time each person's doing at different jobs. And that'll all pull in, so Chris won't have to manually go in and change everybody's hours to what they were doing. It'll actually pull in at those hour types. And so, the, the goal is, I mean, we, we can't guarantee it yet, but that's the goal, that this will all be streamlined and they'll be able to do it on their phones, which goes back to the other issue is that, that's going to have to be a requirement that they have to be able to use, that they're gonna have to use their phones. And I've already checked into it, we can mandate that. They have no, they can't argue it.
That's where the discussion ended. He's got a smile on his face.
Lovely.
That's where the, that's where the discussion kind of ended at the department head meeting.
Yeah.
We can bring it up again at a department head meeting.
The, the overall goal is that this, the reason for this upgrade was to make things simpler for everybody. And, and it really will, it's just people hate change. And so I think it comes down to at some point, we just have to say, you know, you guys have to say, I cannot say it, but you guys have to say, this is just the way it's gonna be. And that's, that's the only way it's gonna work, because the minute one, one group says, well, I'm not doing that, and they get to not do that, then every other group's gonna say the same.
Yeah.
And then we spend all this money on an upgrade for nothing. Yeah. So I mean, because I've, I've had other, I've had many areas that are like, oh, well, that's not gonna work for us. Well, yeah, it will. You, you just have to do it.
Well, a lot of places you already have to do it.
Well, there's just not, I've never worked somewhere that I didn't have to clock in and out when I came to work, when I went to lunch, you know, that, that's usually pretty standard. I mean, it's not.
Except factories. Fishers, we never had to.
You didn't clock in and out?
Not for lunch.
Oh, not for lunch.
Not for lunch, but you had to clock in and out to go to work.
In and out to go to work, and that was it.
But now was yours paid lunch? Was yours paid lunch?
Yeah.
Yeah, so see, you don't clock in and out, it's paid lunch.
Well, some were, some weren't.
Yeah, because see like over nine one one, sheriff, they won't clock out, because they don't, that's part of the, it's right in the handbook, they don't, because they're twenty-four sevens and they don't. Theirs is a paid lunch.
Yeah.
So you're still on the clock, you're, so you won't.
But even when we were just a two-shift operation, we never clocked out for lunch. It was just automatic, you got a half hour lunch and that was it. But then, of course, being in a place like that, everybody takes it at the same time.
Right, see, that's just it, yeah.
That's it.
Yeah.
But out on the roads, if you don't know, somebody's out there bleeding or.
Right.
Pulling rocks or anything.
Well, that's, when it comes down to things like work comp and all of that, it's really beneficial to have the actual, were they on the clock, were they not on the clock? You know, I mean, it really makes a difference.
You're gonna have some people like me, I just plain forget.
Well, and, and that's.
No, Kurt would do it for years.
My, my, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of a strict person, I was just talking to these guys about that, I just told my daughter to do with her granddaughter, it's just hard to be strict about rules and what is gonna be allowed. And you give them so, so much time, we're all gonna have, it's gonna be a change for all of us, I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm gonna forget to clock in and out, because it's new. But after so much time, then it becomes, okay, if you're still doing this, then you're gonna get verbal. And if that doesn't help, then you're gonna get written. I mean, it just comes down to, when they're told they're gonna have to, people do it. It's easy to forget if there's no consequence. I mean, that's realistic. I say, I know, when I worked at the casino, I could have lost my job over not clocking in, if, if I did it too many times, I'd been the end of my job, just because I'm not clocking in and out like I'm supposed to. I mean.
Yeah, fishers the same way.
Yeah, and I, I don't feel like it would take much, just basically, once they realize that the county's serious, this is going to be how we do it. People all decide they gotta do it. I mean.
Fishers, if he was one minute late and you poked in, you was six minutes late, and after three times, you're fired, period.
Yeah.
No questions, you're just fired. It's kind of rude.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a reality. It's time, I think, that employees take a little more responsibility. I feel like department heads have to take up a lot of slack for their employees, because the employees aren't forced to do what they should though. I see it just because I know how many department heads are constantly fixing time sheets now, just with the ESS, you know. It, it's unbelievable that the employees cannot remember to put their own times in. It's like, you want pay.
Yeah.
That's why you're telling us what you worked, you know.
Yeah.
But they're, they've just gotten too accustomed to someone else doing it for them. So.
I'll also, I'm one of the worst ones for change.
We all, yeah, it's hard for.
Well, of course, you guys are roads guys, we know how they are about change.
I'll send yours today.
Okay, thank you.
I was just temporary roads guy.
Okay, well, we just wanna do it, it's come up now that we're doing this new update, so we just wanted to see where you were with us.
I don't want to, I don't have any gals one.
Do what we do.
I got those in a mail.
Oh, thank you.
I don't know what they wanted us to do with them.
Oh, okay, now look at it.
I have another one, I'll, I'll share with Bill.
Okay.
And some book.
Looks like a kid's book.
For a kid's book about government, local government.
Artificial intelligence experiment.
Artificial intelligence.
I think they wanted us to maybe order more of them.
You think?
Okay, yeah, well.
Read in there, and I didn't do it, but just see what, how it describes the auditor's office.
Well, it's the best office ever. You gotta find audit in here. Let's see what it says.
Take a seat, Ben, you look like you're just.
Well.
You guys almost ambushed him when he walked in, he's probably waiting to run.
Well, you don't see him this early. I just figured.
Did you wear socks or what?
No.
We made it early a few times.
See, here, take Mike's job.
Boy, you're gonna, you're not even in there.
We are getting here.
We're not in here.
Are you kidding me?
No, we're not getting here.
I blanked, the treacherous in there.
Treacherous, yes.
That's the root.
Because it requires them to.
The area. We're on the back, ready.
The first one.
I know, but it.
The auditor.
Who oversees county assets and finances.
They kind of forgot the whole election part.
Yeah, and the payroll.
And they are the auditor of elections.
And the secretary of the supervisory, right?
That's the supervisor now?
No, that's okay, we're better off.
Oh, yeah.
No, I think, there was something about the board in there, I assume not with you guys.
See, we're nobody, that's okay.
Okay, well, thanks for listening and supporting us.
Yep, 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 yep.
You bet.
Laura, there are very handy copies there for everybody.
For what?
For anybody who takes, you know that? Personally, I have some I have at the end, so if somebody wants something copied, I'll copy it, but normally I'm throwing this stuff away, so.
Somebody wants something, let me know.
What are you doing here so soon?
I got my, I got my coffee this morning.
My goodness.
I don't have any donuts today, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Kurt, I'm sorry, Bill. One of these days, I'll bring the, I'll bring the good ones.
Anyway, I've been on this council a long time, I wouldn't like.
Don't blame them for not being home, come on, Casey.
Mondays, they're not, they're not.
Well, when you write something, you do that time.
I know. I told them, I said, you guys open on Mondays, I guarantee you, you'll make a killer.
What have you got there, still asshole?
I need, I need a little bit of this today.
I don't have patience.
I need a little bit of this today.
But no, not problem anymore, everything's cleaned up.
No, I'll, I'll bring some in.
I don't need them.
Sometimes I don't know if I'll be here or if I'll be, you know. And then unfortunately, I'll have to eat them all myself.
Well, they've been careful what you do.
Unless you stick with this week.
Old signs on doors, for door doors, you know how they get crumbling out the time. We just, you know, we've got a lot of complete barriers.
But then it's tricky too, everybody just be really overwhelmed.
But anyway, that's. There were a couple of things we could.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I'm done with that. Use my time wisely or I'm. Okay, you're crazy, that's my next time. So that's that.
So four tens has passed, I don't know if you guys were.
Say what?
Four tens for the road crew. They got a reunion. And I was approached Friday regarding kind of the way it's been done in the past here. In the contract, it talks about how like all, if not all road employees are doing the four tens, then if they don't get that, that two hours of vacation of July fourth.
Yeah.
So I didn't know what your guys' thoughts were on that, because I'd still want, just with our police stretch, you know. We'll need him on like Fridays for construction inspection, that sort of thing. So it'd be a lot of overtime if we didn't have him do four tens too. So I, I don't know what your thoughts are on how that can handle that, or.
Shane's the one you normally keep.
Yes.
Eight hour date, right?
Yes, correct.
And he's the only one?
Yes, he's the only one.
That's been that way the, the whole time?
Well, it seems, I think, I don't know. I think it was the timer to a bill, and I think when Pat was still the site tech, he was eight, or needed five hours as well. But, so that's where I don't know.
How was, how was your way bill about it?
He's on.
He does, I think he does it, I think Shane doesn't really wanna go to four tens.
Okay.
So, then.
I think he's in the eight, so nobody else do the.
But then, there's the issue with the July.
July fourth.
But, I mean, that's the thing where, I think they're also with this new contract getting more vacation time too, so.
They've always had to either use comp time vacation or take a little outback.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, I don't know, yeah, that's where.
You know, then two hours.
See, they're already getting the nights per code, four days a week versus everybody else, so.
Yeah.
So. Anyway, that's where I was just kind of seeing how what your guys' thoughts were on that, and that sort of thing. Because I know, it looks, I. Chris had pulled up a, but it's from, I think, April twelfth, and it looks like the board met with some union members then.
Oh, yeah.
About talking about, you know, going from the ten to the, or having July fourth paid ten hours rather than the eight hours. But it looked like you had that time, so.
I should say.
I gotta go see somebody, you and Larry.
I just think we need to get another one in case, so we don't want to, but even two doesn't work.
Yes, it's just the one department, so it'd be the one department getting kind of two extra hours or holiday days, just as.
It's just one holiday, right? Yeah. I think it's.
Just maybe like years.
Right, that's how we.
That's, that's what I, I just know that that. Well, it's kind of wrong.
No, they're gonna want that every year.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, big question, I had every year.
So, that, that's kind of. Which is what they're really.
Yeah.
But you know.
And so I, I've assumed, I've assumed that, that's the lawyer's stance.
That way yourself.
And getting.
Just a minute, I want to.
Okay, all right.
Sounds good. It makes the agreement for. Talking about. Give my update.
I can't believe it.
Not wanting to go more down.
You have to be a little four ten. So. But I can see you sometime, I have a beer on Friday too.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely. Blade guys didn't like it, because it's a lot of time.
Six months.
Yeah, blade, you know. Yeah.
She's gotten a pretty good glimpse.
A lot of guys, just farmers, Dan always didn't like it, because that script is, I said, one hour, four hours a week, you're getting, you're losing farming, come on.
That's a lot of time.
Yeah, yeah, so not for him, because he only, they only farm like three hundred acres. It's a waste tomorrow.
Yep, no, we'll just do like your.
Okay, okay, sounds good. I'll probably, I don't know if that works, I'll just try. Bring that agreement to the board next week. With that, and all of you guys, if you guys are kind of. Just like finding a day, you know, I don't know, I'll just bring up a new one, that'll talk about going from.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, gosh. It'd be going to Labor Day to, or, no.
Actually, we have a Labor Day.
Yeah, Memorial Day.
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day to like. And just touch for the week after Memorial Day, the week before.
Did you get my email?
Not until today, it was in my junk. So I was just gonna ask you about it.
Exactly.
And then I was like, maybe I should check my junk.
We'll do that.
I think there was only a web link in it, that's what flagged it, so. I got it, yeah.
Yeah, it's always.
I told her about that, Chris article you showed me, and I couldn't.
I heard that you showed her earlier, but.
No. Yeah, that's, that's kind of.
Maybe an extra hour would mean today would make your day, apparently, not?
Reason.
Now I'm kind of.
I, I knew you just took the whole stuff, something like that. You got that in this side, or anything like that. So.
Do you have that rumor ordered yet?
I didn't.
It was so cool.
Yes, it is ordered.
Since I was a.
Run that through this year or next year.
I should be able to run it through this year's.
Okay, so are you gonna be able to get one this, they already had it stocked?
Yes, they, they, they'll need to, they'll need to put the carbide, because I got, when I got the carbide tips, so they don't put those on there.
They'll set Brunel pads up.
Yeah, they don't put them on there.
Twenty eight.
They're manufacturers. Just change out the tips.
That's nothing, that's nothing, like, the one, the one field is gonna be nine hundred acres.
He said he had one, it's just getting everything.
So I said twenty, I mean, that's still a lot, but nothing like.
Try that one out, he said, yeah.
Talking about this rap, this over, because that's not tall. Terry's.
Right.
I'd be wanting when he starts.
Be, be here a little. Well, I don't know. Well, I just kind of, I'll, I'll give you.
Just hand us something there and then we'll be all right.
They don't need it today.
You know, take care of all people.
Yeah.
I asked some of that question.
Starting that.
When would you say, okay, we've got enough meat or meat, at least that you never will. Throw down, and this is the time where we're.
Some contractors.
So many cars.
They can't believe they allow kids here.
There's obviously some like. Relaxing people.
And then you're all talking.
All right.
Thank you, man.
There's not enough acres to put a turbine in. I was doing, going to California.
Oh, tonight you're in that.
They said it'll.
I'm getting a little freaked out. Normal.
Right, exactly.
So, people think that that's for us.
Oh, no.
Yes, yes.
Mine is.
And it's right there.
My skill.
I don't know what's.
But we only watch it slash day.
I had.
And what, you know, it's like Google's. And when it feels, when they're coming. See, rather.
My. My teacher. Yeah, truly, that mean, no, I don't mean.
I'm so.
I don't, no, no, I, I, but that's the impression I get, that there's not that many jobs.
Rick and, Rick and.
That's why he looks.
For you.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry.
I.
Because actually, my. So I didn't know. No, well, I think Dan takes your clothes.
No, look.
Yeah, we know, yeah.
So every year on Earth Day, I pick up.
No, that's your.
I just work in my house, back in half. This year, I thought, I had a great time here.
I'm the same thing.
And I'm sure, go by this, go by this. And it's the same.
I get the natural, the same thing.
So this went back, she had a reference in there, so.
This year, and, and the rally, this year, I read, I know, it's like constantly scary. Either got thrown under, so that's two children. That was, yeah, so this year, it was like, the turntables, I had my. Like press board stuff. That's like.
Just form their office.
Couple of years ago, they were like. So, buddy, guys, what you're home, it's Jeremy, said, well, the.
Absolutely. There's a lot of.
You know, it's just been a month.
Well, sure.
Yeah.
Well, it's like, it's a landfill, so it could be, it could be, but not very much, most of it's.
If there are.
Years and.
Really?
So I mean, if you take. I mean, honestly, I would like to have it be an initiative, it's free.
Teaser, teaser, I, make sure you get hers on that week. We'll tease, we'll tease. Put a, put a basketball hoop over it, make it five, make it ninety-five. Good luck in my head.
We must walk the roads.
It's tough getting going.
It's my turn, seventy.
Watch driving.
Or, I don't know.
Well, now we're talking. My ramp. My ramp.
New anymore.
Figured it out.
Each side fills.
Even the office to come over.
Every single year, it's like.
Oh, it's all making you visit.
Flowers. So, yes, one year my grace was taught, I didn't want to tell this to someone, they'd take pity on me, I was getting old and.
Makes the world go round, it's called.
Have you brought that up?
I'll get some.
No, we can't do everything, we're not, no, fix the whole county, it's like.
I just wanted to other.
No, I don't think so, I don't think so.
Good, how are you?
I'm all right. It's just like.
Well, it's, I like, and I don't wanna watch.
I can't even stand driving, I'm tempted to. I would stop and stop.
Good morning.
If I see somebody do it, I would produce a vigilante, and go smack them.
I think it's a front row.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'd be a champ.
Partially he's still sick and partially started building.
Oh, it ain't.
He was a couple days.
Yeah, no, we're not gonna do any.
Our gravel is really cheap, because they call that hardy martins, it's straight. So we do.
No, we're not gonna make that.
Well, you can't just. I mean, after I.
One guy is down there underage. A lot of shoes that are, be sure they're like, more work up the phone.
Me too.
Yeah.
It starts further down.
Well.
Or in a policy. They're trying to make it count more.
All gone.
Oh, the park where they're gonna over, over.
Across the north end.
And now we're having.
Good, if people could, you know, there's something that they're gonna use.
Why you hurt? You scare me. First engineer than you.
Yes. It's the way I. Don't forget, today we got.
They never.
Or there's part. Where her.
Yeah.
Oh, it is, and I miss it, yes, impossible.
Right.
I mean, I used to drive that.
Right over there.
Yeah.
Other people take that or not.
Yeah. Yeah, I ran it off.
Yeah, I did too, when I come through there.
You see this, it's thirty percent plus.
So, you stood all in here.
You think, gotta think after. Sure, I hope so. They have it listed, probably just. But the public hearing's at nine forty-five, so that, so they have to. I'd say we. Otherwise, I'll be like. But that'll be the last thing. Cause they have to do this at nine forty-five, cause it's a hearing. And I bet they'll throw those other things up before that, cause they'll have plenty of time.
Don't ask me.
I don't believe us. I also know that. That's why. Oh, my.
At home or here?
At home. Oh.
At home.
Yeah, at home. White envelope.
I have that.
Yeah, I think it might be sitting there. Yeah, I think it was not that.
So, it was just.
Yeah. Hey, I saw him.
Two hundred.
Oh, you said. You got it.
I didn't look at that.
I give.
Well, you know.
I don't know.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. Maybe I should, I have a.
It's the.
But I don't want them to do that either.
No, it's like.
We just talked through. How do you do it, George?
And then, uh, there was one thing, which we do.
I don't know. There is, there's no, no. So, yeah, you know, you. So, it's just a good.
Yeah, I didn't. I think the. Yep. It's a little. Yeah. Really, those, could you.
Many ways.
Take you two dollars. You're gonna buy.
Well, I gave you my. Those are very, very people. To me.
I'm watching it, somebody. I see now that.
I'm happy this country, you know, know, how we, they come out of. I have to leave, I would be sent.
And you take two dollars.
And they don't know this, it, it's worth it.
So, I have.
Now, we're not telling them. I was, I was. That's what they're saying, it's really hard. Very hard. You know, and they, they're not. And they would be people screaming back.
Yeah.
And it's.
She's been like three years. Oh, yeah. That's.
I remember that.
Oh, yeah, they brought that.
It's, it's, that's a take a.
Oh, yes, yes. And.
We're not.
Oh, we didn't hear.
Sure was. Put it on that.
Did you ever check? Yeah. And we're normally, you just like. That's something for our. Gotta run it out.
I guess it's, it's just.
Didn't you remember that you last, last week? Yeah. For. Boxer inch. Oh.
Maybe it's just more, directly than it normally.
Yeah.
I would like. They don't have to. Shire, they don't, they don't shop better again.
I said, it's a great deal. I said, this is.
There's, there's an officer, every. Something to say. Set her out, face her down.
Well, this is. It was two weeks ago. Well, then, Trevor's a lot just said. Move on. Oh, yeah. He always said. Like, raise, where's. I knew you have a shoot. I don't get it, I'm a little. Yeah. And we've got. And. Well, you know. To me, it's.
But you're saying it's already listed, it's called, we saw, yeah, so, it's redundant.
Yeah, so it is.
It's similar to.
They're allowed to, uh, portions of the code, if they want, it's a fraction. But they're. But, um. Some of this is just like. Probably. Like, yeah, like the training, all the personnel. And then, some of it's not referenced, like the conflict of interest is in the code, but it's not referenced in the code.
More than they need.
Yeah, some of it doesn't make any sense.
So, maybe my issue is missing a bit of code, I think my.
You're gonna need to get a bigger.
What's that?
You're gonna need a bigger.
Need to get a bigger.
This is the carry here.
Oh.
When it gets big.
We're not gonna get off.
So, do whatever they want.
I'm here.
We don't want to.
They still hold together, that's pretty good.
Yeah, no, this part still doesn't want to be there, doesn't have to go down here, for this part.
Did they get their. Yeah, they got their, uh.
It's been easy, honestly.
At this point, now, if they mix them up.
This is, this is what.
Well. Well, then, that can't be what they were doing today, cause that's not.
I know that.
You don't think they got. I don't.
Saturday.
I was sort of talking about that. I'm not even. They're like, they're talking about it with, uh, really.
Oh, yeah.
And. They were new, uh, what you say. You know, you don't. Yeah. This is. Well, actually, I mean, this is what.
You know, what, uh, what's bottoms, the department, starting, you know, the very bottoms, what is that? Yeah. Just a normal page?
I don't know, but other than. Part of it, got that, it's just a courtesy that they. I don't know, I know anybody that's there, who would now recognize. You know.
Yeah, no, no. Not a top secret.
We're all getting.
Let it look good. Oh, I don't. They have personal answers.
Your husband said, here, give me all of it.
That was my answer.
Yeah.
He had his third one. We just. And I was like, I'm like, stand here for like an hour. But though.
And the makes that a tour, it was. Right at that time, when you.
Up north. Yeah, I'm seeing, that's just, that's just the block, right? It's just not paying.
Two bucks.
Oh, that's.
Okay. She, she had. She had.
Well, there's one, there's one right.
Or that. I did, I did. A friend of mine.
And then we have two more.
All your, you pick the state you want.
Now, you want your.
You say, you say, you say.
So. Never got another one.
Definitely, another victory. Yeah.
She.
The whole story. I don't know the whole story. It seems like they used to. I don't know.
He's like, and now.
This is not what she.
That had just directed on.
But if you haven't known this.
I mean, seriously.
I just go on. Family, my family, but friends in the, in the.
I got a mile.
Ten, fifteen years, he just wrote it.
That's.
Two. Visually, but now, she's friends that could share it out, out of his brain, being turned off.
And they wanted to smile, dog, it's being smarter.
They're all just. Three things.
They want that appearance.
Yeah, I know. I know, I know, I'm sure, just know this money, we don't do.
Yes.
I don't check, check anything for you. Do you do it either?
Not a picture. I'm just. For sure.
So, I don't, you know what I mean?
We had the same thing on, yeah, it's B F. You know, yourself.
I didn't say me.
That was not. Wouldn't hardly. But then you get there on.
Yeah. There's all.
Hi, Tom, how are you doing today? I think you need to start right.
I have a fifty here.
Are you by yourself?
No. I didn't. I didn't tell you about.
Two, six, two. I didn't, I'm just like. Yeah, we have.
This is the reason you don't wanna go to five. I don't know, they don't get elected because of that. I don't know, maybe, maybe not. I don't even learn, I don't watch, it's fine. Ever have a good. But.
And then, cut it down.
I, I think before all, that it happened here.
Well, in a couple of years, we can deal with the.
Yeah, I understand.
We'll give, we'll give it a, give it some time to figure out if it helps.
Yeah.
It is, in my mind.
Yeah, I'll eat it too. That's one thing, and.
I don't, I don't, I don't.
It's gonna be worse.
Here's.
Yeah, they'll be here.
They're gonna do theirs during our regular meeting.
No, well, yeah, they normally do.
Oh, okay.
They normally do.
Alright. Alright, I guess we're getting started with the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. I, uh. Would have public comment.
Minutes.
No.
I, I was only five minutes. Yeah, well, first, you work for. Then you. You want down or for? For hauling. Yeah. So, you add those together. Yeah. I see. I didn't see this. It's just. I'm gonna work in there. Jeez. There's more.
Oh, geez. Oh, sure.
Oh, wow. Ever seen a one line expense? You were. No. And you're two thousand bucks. Oh. Hey, this shouldn't cost much, it's only one month. But then again. Maybe it will.
Well.
You do, yeah. Alright.
Okay, well, the ordinance fourteen is on the agenda for today, and I've spent considerable time going over it and doing some marking on it. So, I looked at it from the perspective of someone coming in who doesn't know the dynamics that have been going on in this room, because we all kind of know the story and why the comments have maybe been written the way that it is. So, if someone came in and said, I would like to make a public comment, what do I do, and I handed it to them this, would I be comfortable, and would they be comfortable? I would not be comfortable, and I think they might look at it and go, wow, I don't know that someone really wants me to talk, that's the impression that I, I get looking at this. So. I, I would like to think that we can all assume that we come into this and we can agree to civil discourse and maintaining decorum. And I know we can do that, and I think as adults, we should assume that. Um, and beyond that, you're responsible for keeping us in line, and you're elected, and I would expect you to do that. Um, list some, um, behaviors that are not acceptable, it's not, list some, it's not limited to that, and then assume Kirk can take over from there. Okay, I've made some comments here, I'm going to give it to Kirk, but I just would like to see it a little less intense and intimidating than the way it's been written right now. Right? Oh, early move your.
You need to do that all over again.
Yeah.
I think it's just, oh, there's only one more, I don't know, there's two more.
He's just looking at the claims, so you, you need to talk.
I was gonna save my comments for the actual public hearings, so, I don't know about anybody else.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're proud of that. What was Dicerts? What was Dicerts playground, I mean, from a, you know, that, that just got, that was like forty thousand dollars, wasn't it?
I thought they were still raising money for it.
I think they reached it, I think, a week ago.
They got money from the county foundation award, thirty thousand.
Yeah. Oh, that was just from that, so that's, that's how we made it.
Are you talking about the school playground?
Yeah.
Okay, the city is also going to redo their playground. So, if that's confusing on what playground, there's gonna be two playground renovations, school and city.
We have all kinds of places to play.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Can I make a comment?
Well, yeah. Well, yeah.
Looked at this one page where on number two it says that the attendees must be seated and silent. That's a pretty strong word. Couldn't they put civil in there? If I'm sitting here and I have to say something just a little bit, I'm not silent anymore, or like I said, even if I, if I sneeze or whatever. That's a strong, that's a strong word that, that it's sat here, we can't be completely silent. I mean, she talked about being civil, and I agree with that a hundred percent. This is what we need to be, is civil, and be patient with each others, so I guess that word is a little strong.
I agree.
So I guess I do have a question about the public hearing part. Since Dan's not here, is he going to get like transcribed comments from everybody so that he has a legitimate reference on what to vote? When he gets to the vote? I mean, if he's not here listening to everybody's comments on the public comments, that seems like it wouldn't lend to his vote very well if he's not hearing people's concerns.
He is, he's called in.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
Well, the meeting started five minutes ago, so he hadn't called in yet. So Berlin should talk again during the public hearing because he didn't hear her public comments?
And you were, and you were correct.
And we liked it.
Well, you know what, everything I say is really written there.
Yeah. But, getting your name down here.
You can write on the board.
I'm just saying. You want, I'm not spelling her last name.
Or my first name doesn't really get spelled.
So is Kurt gonna make copies of that and give to Joe and Dan? Why don't we get the information to everyone, this is our question?
Um, I, Kurt is responsible for informing his board. You go, Kurt.
You go, I will.
That's not spelled out policy.
Well, Kurt, is that a legitimate question, though? Public comment is nine fifteen to nine thirty, and multiple times, you know, somebody's sick, somebody's on vacation, they don't call in until nine thirty, and they do miss the public comments. Should they be expected to call in when public comments start? Or do we wait until the meeting starts when they're listening? I mean, that's, that's a legitimate question.
Well, and if we start the meeting.
I don't know.
I mean, we're spelling out so much stuff here in absolute detail, that's kind of an important thing.
And if we're starting the meeting with the pledge of allegiance, that is the start of the meeting, right? I mean.
Yeah, I just never, I never thought about it, so, yeah, it's a good question. I suppose it'd have to be outlined in the, how you run a meeting, I guess, let me get to it, maybe, maybe it would be in here.
Yeah, no, I didn't.
Um, yeah, I don't know.
Well, I think it says in the code, um, just to help you guys, um, that, um, the board doesn't have to have open meeting time, so I assume that, uh, there probably is no, um, I mean, I don't know that it says you have to have it during the regular meeting or not, because it says that the board chooses to let people talk, so, I don't know, I, I, I could look for the code on that. I mean, I know where the code is on that, but I don't know that there's anything that says that it should be within the regular meeting time or not. When you do a public comment, I'm not sure, I don't know. Because none of my, uh, the stuff that we were looking at, um, didn't show public comment time and open meeting time.
Well, if, if everyone's here, it doesn't matter, but it's just when one is gone, when should they be expected to call in?
I think that, I think you guys should, I mean, I, I personally think that he should probably have called in.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think those are just common sense, just.
Or courteousness, and be on board with you guys here.
Right. And I'm sure, I mean, I hope he calls in on time, he's, I know he's really busy, so, I mean, I'm not making excuses, I'm just saying.
Oh, that's fair. Well, and then if you, if you bring that into it, technically, the agenda starts at eight thirty when people can come in to discuss other department issues. I mean, what if someone wants to come in to discuss something and one of the supervisors is gone?
Uh, I don't know, I guess, I guess I would.
Pretty good. Excuse me.
I guess what, if she, if she said something.
You bet.
That resonated, or not just her, anybody said something resonated, and he wanted, whoever's gone wanted to know. I'm sure he could ask us what was going on too.
So are you gonna remember to tell him about the, the thing this morning with the time clocks and everything?
The what?
When they were talking about the time clocks and clocking in for lunch, are you gonna remember to tell him about all that?
Oh, obviously, definitely.
Yeah, I mean, that was very public.
And how, and how, yeah, but that was during your agenda meeting, it's on the agenda.
So, yeah, there's, I mean, I, there's times I've been gone, I didn't call in, so, I mean, I'm personally not one of the sticklers for every little thing, so I, I use common sense. I think common sense a lot better than looking at, nitpicking at words, so, um, if it's important enough in the public comment, he will find out, or I would find out, because obviously we're gonna come back next week and say, hey, what happened? You know what I mean? Or, you know, whatever, so I'm not gonna lose sleep over him not calling in for.
And I think you guys talk sometimes during the week.
Yeah. Are you waving at me, or do you wanna say something?
I don't wanna say something.
Okay, did you wave a couple times, I thought you waved back?
Well, I don't want to interrupt. No person shall represent irrelevant material or undue reputational statements of information. So everything you've just said, Kurt, we've had a really nice, maybe six months where we've been kind of relaxed in here, nobody, you know, just dealing with stuff as it came up, and a lot of irrelevant comments about fishing, racing, farming, uh, weather, um, drought, um, all kinds of stuff, which led to a relaxed atmosphere. So everything you just said about not knowing where to go with all of this, I, I, if I were you, I wouldn't know where to go with all of this either, except to throw away and go back to where we've been to the last six months. You know, in July of last year, twenty twenty-three, we went through all of this, I've got the newspaper with me, um, and after that, things got better. So, um, I'm not sure why, I'm not sure how this is going to help, this packet of rules where all we're gonna end up doing is calling out point of order, point of order, point of order, every single Monday morning. I'm not sure how this is gonna help the atmosphere and the environment, people that come to these meetings. Berlin said nobody's gonna feel comfortable talking. That, that's right, because nobody's gonna know if they can talk. So I don't know, it seems like this might be, um, a pretty controlling piece of paper that we, as citizens of Tama County, might not need. There's not a bunch of feldens in here. Although, after reading this, I guess we could all become that way.
You got a big, you got a big guy behind you that would keep.
I already discussed it with him, and you know, I'm ready, I'm ready to go. Half dozen things in my cell, that's all I need, and I like hard beds, so that'd be good, warm water, shit.
Nobody asked me if I was ready.
Morning, Dan. Hello? Are you there, Dan?
Yes, I am.
Okay. If he, are you in a tractor? Gonna lose ya. Yeah, one thing Berlin has down is that public comments outside of designated time allowed as permitted by chair of meetings will be. I mean, I personally don't have a problem with that, you know what I mean? I, obviously, I've been, to me, as a public commentator, you see, you know, if somebody's interrupting every little thing and, and with, you know, a very forceful, when it's common, I mean, I don't have a problem, well, I just, you know, let you talk, I stay sitting there and not coming up, I, I don't have a problem with that at all. Of course, I'm not gonna be the chairman forever, but, um, again, I'm not a stickler for those, I think this would be, that would be common sense. You know, um, so, I mean, I don't wanna come in here every morning and run a jail, or, you know, I don't, I like to talk. When it's quiet in here in public comment, I.
It's very uncomfortable.
Well, I just talk. And.
Mike doesn't have anything to do.
When this was brought to us, what, two weeks ago, Tammy? Two weeks ago?
Yeah, a little.
Something like that. It was explained then too that this is part of our risk pool to bring some continuity into our risk, the ten counties. So all of our ten counties have the same basic ordinance is what this is for. If we vary from that, it's not a big deal.
No, it's not.
It's just to bring ten counties together with one ordinance is what this is for.
Are they all discussing it right now?
Yes.
I would assume yes. So, but that's basically what it's for.
Yeah, it wasn't directed at anybody, um, it was, um, some that, something that the counties needed to do, because there's a few counties that their meetings are not very, um, orderly, and they've gotten themselves in a lot of trouble. So the intent was to develop something so that we had the information there in front of them, um, what needs to happen. So, that's what that was for. A lot of that is in the code, so.
Okay. Should we start the meeting, or?
I'm sorry, I'm reading, don't bother me, man. Guys, I apologize. Um, can I get a motion to approve last week's minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make, I'll second, I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Close? All righty. Uh, Ben was in earlier, Dan, um, he had some questions on, uh, on the four day work week, which passed again this year, with the, uh, the, um, union.
Holiday holiday.
Yep, with the union, he just had that kind of same question, it comes up every year about the two hour, four July holiday, and we've always, you've always had to take two hours of comp, which I know as an employee back in the day, we always questioned and da-da-da, but it, it's just, it makes sense, that's, that's the way it's gotta be, so, um, he, we let him go, we didn't make him stay for an hour, so he's not here.
We told him to go ahead and run his ten, four, ten hour days like he normally does.
Sure.
Yeah.
So.
I, I think that's good for everyone.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so, well, I guess it's, uh, HR?
I have no problem with that, let's go.
Okay. Do you have any problems, it's your turn to talk.
No, I don't, whether or not.
Okay, awesome.
Does he have to still bring something to Sonic?
He is.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, he's gonna do it.
I didn't know if I got change in the.
He's gonna do it next week.
He'll break in next week.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty, can I get a motion to, uh, approve the claims?
Okay, and Dan, our claims for this week are five hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-nine cents.
That's a pretty good one, that I'll make, please, we can pass.
Yeah, that's a big one, I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Close? Okay, so, move the claims.
Big week, big.
I've done it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, look, um. The public hearing?
Oh.
Nine forty-five, so let's go into some others.
Yeah.
Um, we've set a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-four budget amendments.
So that would be me, and we usually do an amendment every year around this time, or May.
Yeah.
So I sent out an memo to all the department heads a few weeks ago, so, um, I've got requests from, oh, four departments right now. Dennis, the sheriff, said he would have one, but he was out of the office part of the week, or tied in court, so he's gonna get it to me this week. So I'd like to schedule a, a public hearing for the amendment for May thirteenth at ten AM. It looks like right now preliminary figures, the expenditures are gonna be, uh, one million, five hundred sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-nine dollars, and we have seven hundred, seventy-two thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-two cents to offset it with revenue, with, uh, grants and insurance money. Most of the, uh, over a million is for the Earl Department, for, he had to pour some cement that wasn't in the contract, and then to finish the building, the final bills and all that, which we transferred insurance money over for that, that was over four hundred thousand, so. About half of it is covered by revenue, we have come in to offset it, the other half will come out of revenues, or not revenues, out of fund balances. So I'd like to put that on the agenda for May thirteenth.
Did you get that, Dan?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Okay.
Do we need a?
Only.
To put on the.
Yeah, motion and.
Okay, I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for fiscal year twenty-five budget amendments for May thirteenth at ten AM.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close? May thirteenth, ten o'clock, it's gonna go down.
Thank you very much.
Um, we need to approve Fox Ridge Winery liquor license, uh.
I think you guys have the paperwork, they've, not everything Karen has checked it.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I'll make, well, you can agree to that.
Okay, and I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay.
And all we got left is our public hearing at nine forty-five, and then.
You know, yeah, I don't know if this partner's reasonable, I take it there's probably somebody coming for that?
They usually do.
Okay. Casey?
Kate?
The meeting's this way. Focus, focus, please. Have another coffee, calm down. I'm going.
Did you have anything, Dan?
Nope, just made a shirt.
Uh, so on this, Tammy, on this ordinance, so everybody's got the exact same thing here, we have all ten? Okay, and they're discussing it at the same time here? Okay. That's good to know, I didn't know that. Did you guys say that one time before? Because I just must have.
Yeah, when she first brought it, it was, it was for this ten, yeah.
Yeah, it was, um, the attorneys just thought it was time that we have something to follow, that people will read and understand versus, because reading the code is, first you gotta know where you're going, and what to look for, and it's like, if we did any ordinance, that would help.
Okay, so it's.
That's why we're doing it. So it's not, it actually had nothing to do with anybody here or our meetings, it was just putting it together for those ten, for the ten counties together. And he asked me to do it, so that's how we ended up with that.
Yeah.
Yo.
Question for Tammy, can you explain the severability clause, how that works, or, I mean, there's a lot of words in there that are a little confusing. The last page before they sign it.
I do, uh, mine's here, this is yours. Um, this is actual legal language from the attorney, that's where that came from.
Which is why I was hoping you could explain it.
Yeah, um, let's see. So all, what that's saying is if it, if it is not legal, um, it, it's basically saying if it's not legal, um, then that part is invalid, and we can't use it, so everything that, um, is in here came out of the code.
What it's saying to me is that if one portion is not legal, that only that portion is invalid, and they don't have to reapprove the entire ordinance, like they would if they were revising the ordinance otherwise.
Gen- generally speaking, most ordinance are that way.
And how would, how would they decide if that part was invalid?
Well, I guess you have to go to court and get sued, because this stuff comes directly out of the code. Well, I guess you have to go to court and get sued, because this stuff comes directly out of the code. So, who are the other ten counties? Who are the other ten counties in our school? Uh, let's see, Haskin, Mitchell, Fayette, Grundy, Harden, not Grundy, Harden. Which one is...
Should G, Grundy, are they all located together, or...
No.
No, they're all over the spread.
It, on, um, we're like in one, like this.
They're the ones that just have the same insurance.
Yes, right, so everybody else has, um, different insurance, we have all come together as a pool to self-insure.
I don't know how to phrase it, but I would mind knowing what the other counties talk about this, which is doing kinda hard.
Yeah, right.
I mean... It is.
Same kinda, yeah.
I want names, I want...
I think it's too hard, right?
And I'm sure we'll discuss it at our meeting.
And when is that meeting?
Uh, we have one, uh, next month, so... Is it continuous, I mean, it's a continuous...
Is it like all the HR people from all these counties, or when you say, we have our meeting?
Dan's on it.
Yeah, so the trustees of the counties serve on that.
The Heartland Risk Pool trustee.
Yeah, and that's a supervisor.
Huh?
Is that, is that meeting next week?
Is that...
Is it next week, the, no, it's not next week.
It's not, it's next, so...
The twenty-fifth, right? That's this week.
That's this week, Dan.
Well, that's this week, yeah.
You guys need to... You know what year it is.
That's not a regular, Dan, that's not a regular meeting, right?
Is that a regular meeting?
No, I thought that was, uh...
I believe, I believe it is.
Is it? Okay, I'll have to check and see.
So, that's great, that way you, Dan, and you can come back and, and let us know.
Well, we ran out of time last, last meeting, because, um, the meeting, they're running like four hours long now.
Yeah.
Is, yeah, they don't get through all of it, because it's just too long and people have to go, they got dry.
Well, let's get this right up front then, now you got some power down there.
It's always the, the end of the bud, or always at the end of the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully we can...
We'll have great discussion, though.
That'd be nice, you know, I mean, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's nine forty-six.
I think we're in it, in it already, I think we discussed what we needed to do, so, but, uh, alright, great, it's nine forty-five, public hearing on the ordinance of, uh, V point one-four. Any concerns?
May I have your ready, nice to talk?
You may.
Thank you. David Turner.
Thank you.
I tend to be more legalese in my presentation, so I've already typed it out, so I try to stay on target. As a candidate for public office and a matter of principle, I oppose the adding of unnecessary ordinances, especially if they duplicate existing rules, laws, codes, and/or procedures. If they place an undue burden on the public, infringe on freedoms enshrined in the Bill of Rights, specifically freedom of speech, or if they unduly impact elected officials from exercising their responsibilities. That includes common sense. Most of this proposed ordinance already exists in our Iowa code. This is a duplication of effort and is unnecessary. It is too restrictive when it applies to public participation and limits the chairperson and board from exercising their common sense, specifically in dealing with their interactions with the public. Plus, changing any of these items would require an additional action with public hearings. For example, the time stated for public comment and the number of minutes allowed. I note there is no enforcement action or penalty associated with failure to comply with this proposed ordinance. Will it be a simple misdemeanor for someone to lean over and whisper to their neighbor and say, "I agree with what she just said"? I submit the proposed ordinance is a very good checklist, but should be just that, a very good checklist.
David Turner. Thanks, David.
Orwell, some kindizer, um, so, I will not be as eloquent as Dave, obviously, I didn't type mine up like him. Um, there were a few things that I just, I also feel some of this is redundant. Um, when I was reviewing the code myself, I saw that the portion where it says you could, you could adopt portions of the Iowa code, it was mostly in cases where you wanted to make infractions, county infractions, so that they could be misdemeanors on the county level or fine on the county level. Um, whereas we don't really outline how these are going to be enforced, except for the part where, um, you guys would ask the deputy to toss somebody out. Um, aside from that, it doesn't say how some of the rest of these will be enforced. Some of these I feel are, are just what could be in a handbook, as far as new employee, um, onboarding for the seminars and the training. Um, that doesn't feel like it needs to be in the ordinance, and you guys need to review ordinances every five years, it just seems like extra work for you guys to review that. As far as the public comment, if you wanna change the time, we already have the policy. You can revise the policy without the extra ordinance. Um, hoops to go through. And then there's two whole sections on here where it doesn't even outline which parts you, you are hoping to adopt specifically. It's like you wanna pull the entire code in, and the open reading's on the first page, and for the, um, refer to the county ordinance, county legislation on the, I think it's the fifth page. It just says, "Refer to the Iowa code." So, you're not even pulling it out and spelling it out for ordinance, you're just saying, hey, look at the code. Whereas we could just have a list that says, "These are the codes that are pertinent to us and we need to follow these", that includes the conflict of interest one, which I think is a great thing to include. But, um, it, it just feels like we're, the ordinance is all over the place. It's, it's referencing two separate sections of the Iowa code, three thirty-one and twenty-one. Um, and then it goes back and forth, there's a section that says, "We're going to do the pledge of attendance, or pledge of allegiance in all public attendees under rules of conduct", and then two pages later, it has procedures for the meeting, call to order, pledge of allegiance, reading of minimum minutes, it's repeating itself in two separate sections. So, it feels like it needs to be a little streamlined, um, it might not be necessary as a whole extra ordinance. Um, maybe check and see, um, after the public hearings, if you decide to make any changes. You would also have time to discuss with the other counties what their feedback was. Um, but yeah, some of it I feel could just be an employee handbook, some of it you just have a list of references, these are the county, these are the Iowa codes that we want to, um, that we wanna follow in our county. I mean, and then the part where, where other, other board members could have someone evicted from the meeting for, what was the term? Unauthorized remarks during a meeting. So, if someone makes a comment in their public comments, and you feel it's unauthorized, which is not spelled out, it's a very broad term. And the chairman, in this case, it'd be Kurt, if he's like, "Well, I don't feel it's unauthorized, but one of you two does", you could still have the person taken out of the meeting and possibly brought up with misdemeanor charges from what the, what the ordinance is currently saying. So, I just feel a little more review is needed, and maybe some trimming down, um, and making it a little more streamlined with the, with the ordinance here, thank you.
Janet Wilson, um, I guess I mostly had a question on the page and a half of conflict of interest. It is pretty much straight out of the code, but my question is, how is it going to be handled now in Tame County? When it was brought up and read out of the code about a year and a half ago, it said, "Well, that doesn't have anything to do with Tame County", and it's like, okay, well, now it will, but how is that gonna be handled? Are you gonna screen candidates for boards and commissions differently? Are you going to review once they're on it? If they do develop a conflict of interest, what's gonna happen? Because you're supposed to recuse yourself, but that's not happening here. So, I just wondered, I would like to see something, if you're gonna include that, say, what's gonna happen if this is going on? How, how's that gonna help clean up the county? Because just having it on a piece of paper isn't gonna help if it doesn't change the actions.
Well, shit, well, I live in, I live in Dijon. I really didn't come down here to speak, and I wasn't even sure what this thing was about. But I'm gonna say this during the public hearing, what I said during the comments, that on that one page, what we have listed in there, that you gotta remain silent. I just think that's a little too strong of a word. That word can be changed to civil or something, whatever you really like, but we all wanna be civil and, and, and work together, that's, that's the goal. But if, if it has to be silent, that, that's, you know, sometimes people sneeze or a little noise in the back, and you're gonna get upset about it. And I know you, you want common sense, and I agree with it, but once it's in writing, it's, it's really tough to change. So, I guess that would be the one word I'd like to see changed in here, and some of the things that they have brought up, that need to be thought about. And as far as, if there's other counties that are reviewing the same thing, I'm sure that our minutes will be recorded, they will have minutes recorded, you can read what they're talking about. That would be what their official record is. So, you should be able to get that from all of these counties and understand what they're saying on the official record, read it.
To your official record?
Oh, you're not talking, go ahead.
No.
Hers isn't writing, right?
Yeah.
They've, I'm saying my name, that's right, I forgot I did forget.
And if somebody wants to see that, are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You go, girl.
Hi, I'm Karen. So, for clarification, this is brought up on March twenty-fifth. Um, what is concerning to me, uh, is the transparency, discussion, and accountability of not being able to discuss, having Monday mornings where we can't make public comments. When I asked then about the seriousness of the written ordinance, based on some of the items that people brought up, um, we were told that it is very serious once this is signed. And, uh, then legality step in. I am really concerned about this. I look at everything from a biblical world, you're gonna think everybody in here knows that by now. What concerns me about what's been going on in this county for a while, not just a few months, but a few years, and we've brought, been bringing it out, and it's awesome that we've been doing this. It's been making the county a better place, little bits at a time, but the Bible says a lot about building and storing treasures on earth instead of heaven. Because what shall it profit a man if he shall gain the whole world and lose his soul? I'm not gonna give you scriptures, you can look them up. But, you know, we are commanded to stay out of China, there's several places, and not bring China here, and here we are. China's here. Um, that's been our main discussion for the last two years while we've all been here. So, we wouldn't even be able to bring up any of that anymore, um, because it wouldn't be on the agenda. So, our discussions and our reason to be here every Monday, fighting for the county and the betterment of the county, would be extinguished. Um, there's been a lot of division in our families over the stuff that's been, that's been uncovered, that's been, um, brought out in the open, um, not just from deaths, we've all, in our group even. Sharon Early's mom just passed away, that's just one of many, uh, Dan, um, Dirk, one after another. I lost my parents and most of my bio family a long time ago. So, I know how serious it is to lose family members, um, it's, it's a life-changing event. So, it isn't just the division of families over decisions being made, um, over money issues in this county, it's, it's a lot of other things, it's health issues too, and that's gonna continue. So, I, I, I know that God is taking his hand off the protection off of the United States, and we are good examples of that, and we're getting beat up pretty bad. We, I'm not picking on any one person in this room either. However, we need to remember that we need God's protection, and we need to, we need discussion, we need transparency, we need to be here on Monday, we need accountability, and we need to bring this stuff out in the open, and we need to have, be able to, um, feel comfortable to do that. And claiming a person is religious does not make a person religious. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we have another one, another meeting set already? Four, can you...
Oh, yeah, the next meeting is April twenty-ninth at nine forty-five.
Okay.
No more comments?
If you repeat that one.
April twenty-ninth at nine forty-five, so next Monday. And if there's no more comments, we'll close your public hearing at nine fifty-nine.
So, what's the, um, sequence that after that one, they don't vote that day, they discuss and vote the next week?
Yeah, so they're, they've set up three public hearings, and I don't know that they're gonna combine them or, or...
Also, there might be one after that. So, then I'd give you plenty of time to get information from the other counties.
Yeah, so they should have, yeah.
I have a follow-up question to that, if you guys wanna make any changes, then we'd have to do a whole other public hearing, 'cause it would change the ordinance?
I think during this, if they choose, if there's something they might wanna change, we would change it on the ordinance and hand that out before it's approved, so that, that's what this is for, so we can make changes. If they want to.
Question for Tammy, then. So, they aren't necessarily gonna pass the same ordinance in all the counties, and they, they don't all have to...
No, they have to change...
Something.
Yes, they have to change, uh, their meetings and things like that in the ordinance, but... The order, the words, the wording in the ordinance, um, is, um, that comes from the code. So, I mean, we can't change anything that the code, uh, sets. I mean, so, changing the wording would just be on specific things, because I, we would not change the code wording at all.
But not everything's referencing the code?
Some, you're right, some of it doesn't, some of it doesn't, some of it's in the, uh, county home rule. And then part of it, um, the meeting stuff, that's from Robert's rules. Um, so, it's referenced, um, most of them are referenced where you can look at the code, read it, uh, but, yeah.
So, it's drawn from different...
It is, it comes from all different areas, just trying to put it in one place, and, uh, just some direction for boards, and... And I know this thing about silent is a big deal for you guys, and, but I, I would hope you guys can understand that the way the meetings are supposed to be set is no one is supposed to be talking in the meeting unless the board asks you to speak. That's in the code, that's not, that, that's not something we decided to do, that is how you should run your meeting. So, um, they learn, uh, that at supervisor school too, so, it's not, um, it's to keep it orderly. It's not, they don't wanna hear what you have to say, but if you have fifty million people, you only do it one time. You know, the way to run a good meeting is just to follow the policy, and, and I think they're pretty good. We, we don't have any problems right now, uh, but we need to have an ordinance, and that will help with, um, other new board members coming on. Because a lot of people, when they come on, they don't know anything about code. They don't. You know, there are everyday people, farmers, whatever, they would not know the code, they don't even know where to go to. So, but that's what we're all for, we help with our sections of the code and stuff that pertains to us, and we help teach them about it too, so. But it's not anything meant to be bad, it's just, this is how the meeting should be run. Um, I, if any of you, uh, ever watch a Polk County meeting, watch some of the bigger counties and see what happens. People, sometimes they let people talk, sometimes they don't. Um, but that's up to each board, what they wanna do, so.
Yeah, and I think this board has been very generous letting people talk.
Yeah, I think so too. I mean, I don't think...
I don't think that's gonna change, I don't think so.
No, I don't think so. But I don't see, and the other thing, stop and think about it, you're thinking... But I don't see, and the other thing, stop and think about it, you're thinking about the negative parts, but remember what happens when you get a new board in and they say, "Oh, we don't have time for public comment every week," and they take it away. You see what I'm saying? So there are things in there that, you know, assist you also. It's, nothing in there is meant bad, it's the code. That's it, it's not anything about anyone specific or any county specific, it's just information, and the attorney's already looked it over, um, and made changes to it before I ever presented it, and things that maybe I left out, or he added back in for me, but, yeah.
So remind me again, why did they feel they need to reiterate the code at the county level if they're not going to do what I mentioned with making it county infractions? If it's just pulling it out of the code so that we can reference it? That seems a little redundant.
Well, I think the rec, I, I believe the recommendation would be to come to that ordinance that they would do what they're supposed to do, right? So if someone comes in and was belligerent and icky, we definitely want them out, now, for her, whoever. Um, for the safety of the people in the room too. So my thoughts are, they will follow that, that's what they do right now. I know there are things they do that you guys don't like, but they're the board, they can decide how they want to run their meeting, so. It's not my choice or any of us' choices, then.
There was one behind you first, sorry.
Well, it, it sounds like, uh, from what Karen just said on page five, you, the board would be obligated, not do you want to or not, number six, number seven, the board as a whole would be obligated to remove somebody that, um, was not, well, that was making unauthorized remarks during the meeting. It says that, number six, number seven. So if the chair didn't want that person removed, I don't care who it is, it could be me, then the other two or one of the others, or maybe one of the five can say, "Ouch," and according to this, that person is out. And that was the serious nature of the, of this written document. So it isn't just, it's going to be like it has been, where it's been relaxed and, and we've been able to talk. It's going to be, if you talk, you're out, that's it. And Kurt, you might allow us to talk, but, but Dan might say, "No, ouch." So it, this is very serious.
They have that opportunity right now as a board.
Correct, but you said.
They do.
A month ago, that this would make it obligation.
Well, it, it would make it obligation for all those counties for.
We're not telling this country.
Again, this is not directed at anyone specific, these, this is the code. These are the ways we should be running our meetings, this is what the law says, not what I said. So, um, if you don't like it, like some of the wording, I have nothing to do with that, you're gonna have to talk to the state, because I don't do the code.
However, whoever brings this in is the one that is making this suggestion.
You're right, that would be me, that would be our pool.
So it is you.
Well, sure, sure.
If all the pools ain't gonna be the same, why are we interested in what's going to happen around the other?
The, the main, the only thing that will change in those probably is going to be the meeting times. That's probably the only thing that's going to change in that ordinance. The stuff that's in that ordinance is, it's not anything unknown, it's you guys don't know, we know. We know a lot of that stuff, but not everyday people would know. You know, if you don't, if you've never looked at the code, you'll be like, "Oh my God, what is this?" Because you start looking at it, and every code section referenced somewhere else and years before, and it's kind of hard to tell. But this was just to put it all together, a good document for them to follow, to help them. What they choose to do in their meeting is their choice, so.
It will be their choice, it's written down.
Yeah, it's not going to change anything that's going on today, we're still following the rule today, we're still following it. It's not going to change anything.
Next.
I just find it interesting that, at this point in time, we need to have a public ordinance of how to conduct a public meeting. How many years has this Board of Supervisors been meeting? Now, all of a sudden, 2024, we need to have a public ordinance dictating how we all behave at a public meeting? I have to be honest with you, when I read this article on the North Tana Telegraph last week, I was appalled. I thought it was very heavy-handed, I thought it was an infringement on the Tana County citizens' right to speak. I've been a part of professional meetings for almost 40 years, albeit in a medical setting, but it can get pretty hot and contentious in those meetings also. Never been subjected to a public ordinance. I think we all know how to behave in a meeting. I know these meetings have gotten pretty hot under the collar, which should tell you how concerned people are in this county, that there are some very serious issues facing this county. They need to be spoken about, they need to be discussed, the people need to be heard. But I fully agree, there is a proper way of doing it. You already, as a board, have that authority to dictate how your meetings are run. You do not need a public ordinance to do that. Board Chairman Hillmore, you have the right to dismiss anybody out of this meeting who you feel is being disrespectful or is being threatening. That's why we have a deputy sheriff in the back part of the room, as, as bringing people out of here. And in hindsight, maybe that's probably what should have been done. I feel that these meetings have gotten majorly off track these last two years, but it should also tell you that the hot button issues that are affecting this county right now. And to actually tell people that they can only speak a certain way, I mean, what's disrespectful to you, Bill, may not be disrespectful to me. You know, you're going to get into a lot of little nitty-gritty stuff there as far as what is disrespectful or what is just being tactful or matter of fact. So my feeling, when I read this article, I thought it was very heavy-handed. Um, I'm not sure where all these other 10, 10 counties come into play at because that's the first time I've ever heard that in all these years. Obviously, there's a whole lot of stuff going on in other counties that they need to get into later. But you as a board, you are a governing board here in Tana County, you have the right to dictate your meetings, how you want them run. You give the parameters, okay? We do not have a public ordinance to do that. To me, that's overkill. Thank you.
Is your intern speaking in here yet?
I think so.
Can you use S score, man?
So you guys need to motion it in a second to.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the reading of the, uh, public on hearing ordinance. Okay, motion in a second, on favor.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. We're going to Bernie Lowe shortly. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, okay, sounds good, Dan.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you bet, talk to you later, be safe.
Is there written?
Too much, is there something?
I write them in during the minutes.
One cup a day.
Yep, the public comments we had during the hearing will be in the comments. Nope, it'll be in my, it's in my notes right here. Yes, they are, sometimes they are, I do, it's like a synopsis. I did take notes then also.
You got a white marker?
What, what is going on?
This is my, this is my whiteboard today.
Oh, boy.